And winning the ransom, and of course, that's not real profitable at the time because of droughts. I did that for a number of years. Then I came back and applied to the Cochrane's Local Services in Pike Ridge. I worked there for a couple of years. And then there was an opening for a judge in Kyle at the time. And I interviewed with that. And was the associate judge in Kyle. Handled all cases, juvenile protection orders, criminal court, legislative administration, probate. I worked on it. After spending time in Kyle, I applied to be a judge of Rosebud. And I was a judge of Rosebud for over four years. And then the opportunity arose to become a chief judge and court administrator for the Cochrane's tribe. And I helped administrate the court, run the budgets, make sure all the bills were paid, and that the court ran smoothly. And then came the big job. After four tries, I finally interviewed with Governor Newguard. I was happy to be a judge, didn't want to switch, but he was relentless. So I became the secretary of tribal relations for the state of South Dakota. And I went directly with all nine tribes, shared our orders on issues that we could agree on. And I was the liaison between the tribes and every state agency that they had. And fortunately, my other fellow cabinet members believed me. So if we had issues, it wasn't some undersecretary going to talk to the tribe. It was actually the full cabinet member. And I also advised Governor Newguard on Indian policy, sovereign immunity, land and trust issues, a whole gamut of stuff. And I also served on several boards. To include behavioral health, juvenile offense reform, suicide convention, and healthcare solutions amongst many other things. And then in May of 2019, I returned here to Kyle and have been the associate judge since then. I really enjoy my job and I really enjoy the people in Kyle. And some of my major accomplishments was I was the vice president of Governor's Interstate Indian Council, which was made up of 44 states. Also was I also a member of the Sycamore Yacht and Bar Association. I've completed advanced judicial domestic violence training. I've completed the basic domestic violence training. I completed the National Institute of Trial Advocacy of basic criminal skills. I have completed the National Institute of Tribal Court Advocacy Skills. And I also completed the National Institute of Trial Advocacy Training. So I became a teacher. And I've taught advocates both here in South Dakota, in Navajo country, and up in North Dakota as well. To properly cross-examine somebody, direct examination, how to get evidence in, how to refresh people's recollection. So basically, we were teaching tribal advocates to be better advocates and better servants to their clients. I've also completed the US Army Legal Specialist Course, US Army Claims Course, the US Army Administration in Law for Legal Specialist Course, the US Jumpmaster Course, US Paratrooper Course, US Primary Leadership Development Course, and Basic Non-Commissioned Officers Course for Legal Specialists. So as you can see, I've been involved in the legal profession for quite some time. It's really been my passion, and I wish to continue. I think I'm doing a good job for the people of Yolgozun Tribe. I know what judicial temperament is, and I would ask that you retain me.
Thank you, Secretary Emery, Judge Emery. Counselors, are there any questions at this time for Judge Emery? Counselor. Counselor Steele. Wait, Counselor.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon or good evening, Mr. Emery. In regards to your specified location in Kyle, do you have, you have a scheduled work days, or do you attend every day?
I attend every day. We do arrangements and civil cases. And now there's putting an hour in now on the arrangements, so we have to be there. Unfortunately, we had to move our criminal files today. We do criminal files out there Wednesday, so.
Okay, and then currently I'm working on the child protection code with our current judges as well as our CPS director. And I'd like to get involved with community as well as our elders. What are your, what is your opinion on the child protection code, and what is the latest version that you know of?
I normally don't do those cases out here in Kyle, but I assisted in writing this CPS code when I was a judge here prior, and it does need to be updated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Steele. Yeah, a quick question. What's your take on utilizing Makota forms of justice in criminal cases?
If the parties agree to it, I think it would be a good idea to store the justice.
Because the current court says that the court can invoke Makota custom law where it's appropriate. And, you know, from observing, you know, the court in the last couple of decades, you know, it's, I think if we start incorporating our own, our own form of, you know, our practice, look at the form of justice practices in the court where, because honestly, I mean, if you're looking at our, our adult offenders facility, there's really nothing in there that, that helps rehabilitate our offenders to send them back out into the community. So it's like we're not giving the help for our people in our own adult offenders facility. So I think you guys as judges have that ability. And personally, I'd like to see that, but, you know, that's not my call as a council representative, but I just wanted to know your take on it.
I think we would be great if you could get both parties to agree to it. And I also am concerned about the AOF not having programs, because it's been proven that you can't jail somebody out of addiction. You can't jail somebody out of their bad behavior. So I think it would be helpful.
Okay, and then another question. If you come into a situation where you're, you have, let's say, you know, a close friend or a relative, you recuse yourself from such cases?
Absolutely. If I have any close friends, I mean, I have quite a few people that I've met, but they're not an issue. But if I had a close friend or a family member, that's number one priority is to recuse yourself.
And as a judge of Yolgozun Tribe, do you think it's important to keep, you know, our Makota children or Makota families as much as possible?
Absolutely. The issue with that is not having enough licensed foster parents. But when I was a judge at Cochrane, for instance, we had a lot of off-raised and missing children. And we certified our own foster care homes, and it didn't matter if there were nine kids and there was grandma as long as they were, because the state sets so many rules. You can only have so many people in the home. You can only have so many bathrooms, you have to have a bathroom for so many kids. And that's not necessarily our way. You know, our grandma's help-raising, and, you know, it doesn't matter if you've got sex, as long as it's being taken care of, they're not healthy, we've got extra child care for. Don't, you know, don't pin ourselves into a hole where we can't take care of our own.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Any questions for Judge Emery? Okay, well, seeing your hearing, Judge, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
And I just want to sneak out here.
I did already.
Okay, so next you've got Judge Mark. Judge Mark, very quick. Okay, if you want to come up. There have been kind of six to 10 minutes, Judge Mark, so if you ever want to do your statement, or take your questions for counsel, we'll try to stick to that.
Good afternoon, Counsel. My name is Richard Bart, and I'm currently an associate judge for Yolgozun Tribe. I have been acting in that capacity since May of 2016, so we're essentially starting next month. Past five years. A little bit of my history is I worked as a probation officer for Yolgozun Tribe Court for about five years, and then I became a partner for Yolgozun Tribe Court for about approximately five years. And then I worked two years as an advocate in private practice. And in April of 2013, I was approached by some members of the council that if I was interested in being a prosecutor, so I accepted that. Was temporarily appointed to counsel in November of 2013. I made that commitment, and so I worked as a prosecutor for Yolgozun Tribe until basically May of 2016, at which point I was transitioned to my current position. I've been working primarily in the youth and family court, so I've been dealing with the tackles, the custody's, the juvenile offenders, name changes, guardians, child support, things like that. But I've also worked in other areas, like the civil court, handling the ICs, things like divorces, protection orders, restraining orders. And I also, I tried to stay, initially when I got into the court, I tried to stay out of the criminal court because of my history with, as a prosecutor, when you create conflicts of interest that would inherently arise, it would be having to review cases that I was representing the tribe as a prosecutor that would ultimately come before me. So there have been a number of cases when I first started, when they asked me to do arrangements, and I couldn't complete because of previous manner related to that, I was a prosecutor and that essentially tossed into conflict of interest. So with that, any questions?
Counselor, you have a question at this time? Counselor Spatter, Judge, Counselor Steele, Counselor Crayle.
Thank you, Chair. Counselor Crayle has his own hand first, although I will go.
Thank you, Julian. You know, earlier, I brought up the fact that, you know, we keep having the same illegal offenders, you know, and some of these charges are basically the same. You know, I think, you know, the judges have to work, one with prosecutors on whatever type of, you know, fine or whatever it's been assassins people. But, you know, I'm like Mr. Steele, you know, I think we need to have some type of rehabilitation program within our courts. And I remember Mr. Palcher, you know, he was thinking of taking a lot of the individuals out into the community and doing a lot of community service work. And I know that ain't the answer to it, but, you know, how would you address this?
Okay, you're basically referring to what's considered an alternative sentencing format. And I think it's beneficial to the community, like having sending out crews to clean up around, pick up trash, or help people with picking up around their yards, or just keeping the reservation area, especially when we have a high volume of traffic in all the towns. Trying to keep those clean because, you know, we have tourist season coming up, and so I think a lot of tourists that come here, when they, it's like 1% of them, it ties them to return to be able to take them out. Most people are raising money, they're spending, and that hasn't taken out the bags. Like that way, you can help the community, plus help people rehabilitate because of the pandemic. Now, with the pandemic, it's been hard for me to serve because camp offices, which are breathing, yes, for adults, and having a lot of services staff that work at camp offices, or whatever it is people require to check. If you were to be talking, or you're allowing water for those people after a chance, helping clean up around the camp office, pick up trash, things like that. But, you know, we need to be able right now with the pandemic situation, the tribal opens up and more feasible community service, or the help rehabilitation. Until we reach that point, it's probably not going to work as well as it should.
You know, earlier, you said that you basically talked about, you know, acknowledging the communities or do the police officers, but, you know, we've got a lot of grandmas out there that are just out of years, you know, and they can give you a good job, and we can do community service. And most of those, you know, I think that we do have a program that, you know, provide yard work that's been done in the street, you know, a lot of these housing projects, you know, they're not supposed to be ready to go. I'd like to see something like that work that elders, especially the elderly.
Okay, we were doing that, and this goes back to when I was a prosecutor. When Brett Barnes was alive, he was the camp manager at Pike Ridge. We were using him on, I'd say, I'd tell for this, where I got 10, maybe 20 people that need to do some community service, but were bottom of their line because they didn't have jobs, you know, might want to know it by. So Brett and I ultimately decided to collaborate with Cory, who was the camp manager at that time. So we were referring people, we were doing just what you were talking about. He was like in a blind, A were in a blind, because they were elderly. So he would send workers over there, kind of like what you were doing with the day labor stuff now. But they were doing, and then you drag the hour down, and after the waiting during the 40 hours, and they would bring that back to us, take those recommendations to the board, because they had sacrificed that requirement. So lines essentially addressed, but they were still responsible for the cost. So that's one of the things that we're doing. Now, right now, I don't know what the situation is with the camp offices, if they're fully operational, and their facility managers able to bring some people with me. I have, you know, two, three at a time, with the app, if it's around, really, for the community, providing that, because I, I have to know that, and so I don't know what the best situation is because of that.
The last question is, so the laws that we still have for lethal offenders, you know, we have a lot of that, but when there's anything like that, and there was some that goes on, a lot of that you do, what kind of a program would you have for that? What is the punishment for, I have this house for a week or two or something, you know?
Well, for each juvenile offense, the maximum penalty for, for any charge is 15 days per offense. That's the way, it's not a fines, or any different than what for adults, or when it goes to the sentencing guidelines, maximum per offense, whether it's, say, assault of first degree, or just a disorder of conduct, because that's just the way the code is written right now. The council changed that code. Now, if you were going to increase the length of sentences, does that save individuals in the community? Then you probably need to look at maybe increasing the length of sentences, but then also that would include probably changing the format, whether or not those individuals are entitled for jury trial, because the current code for adults says that one in the offense is 30 or more days of incarceration. Individuals are entitled for jury trial. So if you're going to take that standard, which is the adult standard, and apply it to the juvenile, you have to go for the six months.
So what you're saying is, regardless of what their offense acts on, it's 15 days per charge. So if they have, say, three charges, three separate charges, and you went with consecutive sentencing guidelines, then each 15 days once they're out, you're looking at a maximum of 45 days on that. Or if it's four, then it's 16 days. But it depends on this very heavy history, because a lot of, a lot of the individuals that come would not only be in the county, but in adult, or in the same individuals, essentially doing the same thing, just in a different place in time.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Steele. And Counselor Spatter. Okay, I'm going to go to say a question from your side. What's your take on using Makota forms of justice in regards to crimes?
Okay, I agree to ask this question to Judge Emery. I think if we were going to do that, we need to establish, basically, some rules on that. And the passing really down is how we apply that, so we don't have this standard applying here, and then a total of separate standard applying somewhere else to someone who essentially told you the same offense. So I think there should be some kind of guidelines that would be the recommendation. The one thing to take into consideration is the victim, who was, you know, maybe that car window was broken down, house roof broken down, or something like, someone that part of the property then was, then the victim actually have a right to have some say, is how do I fix the wrong that was committed upon me? So they should have something put there, whether it's restitution or some other form of compensation. Maybe it's, maybe they broke a fence, or broke a window, and, you know, fix that, repair that fence. It's a car window, then restitution, car windows, I mean, a windshield was anywhere from 250 on, so that, you know, and how many people were there, hours, you know, especially it's on the elderly, because the elderly and children are also on the strike, and there are individuals who are a lot of the law.
So you stated earlier that, you know, when you're a judge, you know, your term where you did tackle orders or not, was there any instances where you felt that you didn't sell, you know, you were closely related to someone?
Yeah, I will, I'll, because the law and the court said, or the rules of the judges as called a degree of separation. So there should be two degrees of separation, so everybody within that first grade, you are actually brothers, your sister, your mother, your fathers, okay? And your children. The second grade separation, you're your grandparents, your ancestors, and everybody outside of that, you shouldn't have to recuse yourself of the rest, because there's a significant amount of interaction. Or, say, maybe you're more distant, but you can see that, because you live there, you live in their house, they live in their house. Most situations, you probably need to hide, because I was close enough related, and there was enough social interaction that I could do.
Last question, you know, as a judge of Yolgozun Tribe, how strongly do you feel about keeping our Makota children with our own people? I believe very strongly in that, because I do handle all those tackles, or most of those tackles. The situation with that, though, that's the judge, when he gives care placement and supervision to Child Protective Services, then it's CPS who is making the determinants as to where that child is being placed, okay? And then they report back to the court when they do their court reports, and you tell them, you know, how they're doing, what they're doing, where they're at. That's CPS's role in this. So as a judge, though, it's ultimately your responsibility or your judgment to place the child either with CPS or a relative?
Okay, I'll try to speak a little louder then. Okay, when you have a tackle, all right, which is here?
Oh, okay, when you have a tackle, which is temporary emergency custody, and that's that's there. Okay, the procedure is that when the child is removed, now, the tackle law that's on the books right now says that within 72 hours of the child being removed from the family, then they must be served notice that a petition is being filed, okay? So you have a hearing, you don't have it within 72 hours, which you need to have it soon, and I would say within a week or two, okay? At that point, the parents are notified as to the hearing date and time, all right? The parents come to the court, prosecution, and CPS are here. We advise them of their rights, okay, what's going on, give them the option, if they need an attorney to assist them, I usually grant them what's called a 14-day advisory, I give them two weeks, you want to hire a lawyer, they can help. We advise them of their rights, we read the petition, because in the petition contains the allegation of alleged, or abuse, or whatever caused the removal of those children. And once they've been, if they request a 14-day, I tell them, it's going to be a repeat of this hearing, and I expect me to do it with a lawyer there, because that's what you're asking for, you say, I need people help, and I don't have it, so I'd be two weeks higher. All right, so then you get to the 14-day advisory. Again, repeat of that initial hearing. Then at that point, you ask whether they admit or deny the allegation, if it's similar to an arrangement, if it were to do with the matter. So either they admit or they deny. If they admit, then you'll take some recommendations from Child Protective Services and the prosecution as to what they want them to do. The American classes, now, on very eval, a mental health evaluation, and CPS should go in and do a home study or a safety plan. And you set up a review date. Now, that review date can be anywhere from one day up to 90 days, but not more than 90 days. And at which point, CPS gives the parents an opportunity to start that process early. But when, once they've entered the plea, whether they admit or deny, the court gives Child Protective Services the authority for care placement and supervision of that child. So what CPS does is they're supposed to go find the primary relative placement, so it should be placed with another family member. So it should be placed with another family member, okay? I don't know if they always do that, because after I give them the authority or the care placement supervision, where they place that individual is that their determination. And then when we come back for the reviews, if they admitted to the allegation, then they bring a court report to us, tells what's going on, how they're doing, where where they're at, that sort of.
Okay, and and this, you know, the reason why I bring that up, and you you said that you made a statement when you gave them custody, um. I've 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 heard this in the past, being a being a council representative and and you know, leader of my community, I people come and 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 they with concerns and one of the statements made by some CPS workers, you know, you make them, we take them. And that attitude there, you know, it 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 feels like our, and when when they have control of the situation, our people feel helpless when they go into the court system, because ultimately the judges, they side with CPS, not ours. And and that's how our people feel, and that's coming from myself personally, because I have a lot of people that have come to me on issues and so a lot of our people feel helpless when it does come to court, because a majority, obviously a greater majority of the times, the court sides with CPS. And and like I said, our our people feel helpless, and that's why that was the purpose of asking those questions.
Uh I understand that, because some of those are sensitive issues. All right, you're dealing most of the time with younger children. And anytime you're dealing with younger children, and this goes to custody, the guardianship. People, especially the parents in the custody, those are emotional cases. They mothers emotional, fathers emotional, because they both want custody of their children, all right? And so my role as a judge in that situation is try to be the unemotional individual in the room who tries to be, and he's balanced and fair, okay? Because when you have parents pitted against each other, there's a lot of times when it's they don't, they wanted their way, and the other person, they, you know, I it's either my way or the highway situation. And somewhere in there, you need to find the balance between the two. That, you know? Everybody's not gonna get everything in in especially a custody situation. So you try to find something that works for them, try to give them equal access to that child. Now, in the temple situations, it's because the children are removed simply because mom and dad or both were arrested because they were intoxicated or a situation or an incident happened at their home where law enforcement was called, and the determination was made by law enforcement that there is a very real threat to the safety and well-being of these children. Okay, so they're they notify Child Protective Services, you better make that initial contact with the kids, with the parents, and if they find that sufficient grounds is just to remove, then they remove. But if they do that, then like I said, they have to serve them with a notice of hearing that a petition is being filed within seventy-two hours, and that a hearing date will be scheduled at least within two weeks of that notice. Now, there are situations when CPS, you know, after doing your initial investigation, that there's uh there's insufficient grounds to proceed. And they'll come in and they'll just ask, you know, at that hearing, we want to dismiss, because there's really nothing here to pursue. Now, as far as the you make them, we pay, I don't know where that comes from, certainly, they come for, they apply for it.
Good, thank you. All right, thank you, Councilman uh Councilman Swatler.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, uh Mr. Bark. I just have one question regarding the Child Protection Code, and what version are you using? And with the um with it being updated, would you consider the elderly input?
We're we're supposed to be working on that. Um I was actually assigned to that project uh at our last child protection meeting we had in Rapid City, probably what, two and three weeks ago. Um the current version that's being used is the one that was passed. It was basically under the Lowell Division, okay? Now, there is a uh currently, there is a a formatted updated code that's got a lot of line outs in there where language needs to be changed. Now, I think if you wanna bring elders in to put their input, they should probably be a part of that process too, because you're gonna essentially mount two like page by page analysis and breakdown of that entire code. Like a hundred and three pages in that code. So if you do that, then you wanna bring, you want elderly input there, then you wanna have them every time you can do for me. That's that's gonna be a long process. That's not something that's just gonna happen in two and a half days or three days. That's that's because, like I said, you're gonna take the entire code, they're gonna go through it page by page, what needs to be amended, what needs to be removed, and where to add in the recommendation from the elderly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Good evening, I'm Richard Littlehawk, I'm currently the Associate Judge in Pine Ridge. My primary responsibility is mainly in the criminal area. I do take civil cases when assigned, um if there's a conflict of interest. I take uh youth and family court cases when Judge Bark recuses himself. Uh so my my primary responsibility is in the criminal cases that are in Pine Ridge. In nineteen seventy-eight, I attended uh Antioch School of Law in Washington DC, and I graduated with a legal technician certificate along with several other tribal members. There's only a two of us left from that group. We both work in a court system. Um from nineteen seventy to the current to current time, I've worked primarily in the Pine Ridge Tribal Court, mainly as a prosecutor for a little over fourteen years. I also worked as a advocate, uh juvenile prosecutor, uh legal clerk, um prosecutorial investigator, and a period of time in nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-four, I sat on the tribal council representing Wakawami District. I served on several committees. At one point, I was the chair of the Law Order Committee. And within the certain times within that time period, I also worked as a uh held elective office in the community, held the community positions, treasurer, president at one time, twice in Wakawami District, and also sat on several um uh organizations that tried to create it. One is the Parks Board, Personnel Board, and most recently, I think I sat on the um um I don't recall that one, but maybe it's all public service work that I did. I haven't had a merit system employee on that board sometime. I think I had served as a uh um clerk of court for the Supreme Court for a few months, and I was a merit system position. All of the positions I had were either elective office or appointments by a tribal council. And I think at one point, I served as a uh election board, tribal election board member with a couple colleagues who are not here now, Mr. Max Nestet and Vincent Brewer Sr. Uh so most of my time was spent within the traditional system of the tribe. Um in this recent time, I'm serving um running for the second term as an associate judge. And my primary responsibility is in the criminal, uh as a criminal judge. Uh with that, I'll take questions.
Uh Councilors, your questions, uh Councilman Carlo and Councilman Steel.
I just got a comment here, sir. You know, you have a long history of service, the old law suit. I just want to commend you. And I think it was just a year where your hair was gonna get black and you had a break down your back. So I can see the effects of hard work, what it does to a man, brings his hair gray. But, you know, I just want to commend you for your years of service, not only to the district governments, but the old law suit and things, so this is my comment and thank you.
Uh thank you, Mr. Carlo. Um I think at the last time I ran in twenty seventeen, Judge Modle made the same comment. He said he came in with uh hair on his head and it was black, and when he left, it was his bald and white hair.
Uh thank Councilman uh Councilman Steel and Councilman Littlehawk.
I came into council and I was twenty-five and I'm bald and I'm only forty. Um I guess I could impose the same questions. I mean, you've been a judge, you know, for some time and involved with the court. Um would you would you feel like, um I wouldn't say I would, uh would would you like to see the court or as a judge, you know, impose, you know, more lakota forms of justice in criminal cases? I mean, like I stated before, in in, you know, out to the AOF, we really don't rehabilitate our offenders out there, and we pretty much go back in the community, you know, the same way they went in. It it's like for for me personally, I don't see them getting the the help. I mean, so as a judge, it's something that, you know, would would be a possibility, because under the code of chapter eleven, it says that the the tribe can invoke a code of custom law all where, you know, where 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 appropriate.
Uh I think that the direction the court can take, you know, is done from the laws that the tribal council enacts. And that's basically what we follow. Uh our court system is a narrow court system where one party loses and one party wins. But I read recently where the Supreme Court provided guidance where uh parties can resolve differences through mediation or traditional methods. And I believe that's something that the tribal council can enact to direct the tribal court to uh incorporate the cultural aspects into their court system. And that would be a an improvement, because this form of justice or this form of court was imposed upon us from the outside. So you see a cultural clash right there from the dominant society into lakota, akota ways. And that cultural conflict or clash itself uh appears to create more problems than it solves. And in some of our court decisions, uh in civil, especially in civil cases, um we've incorporated uh discussions amongst uh the opposing council to come to some resolution of their problem. Because basically, the courts are there to resolve problems between parties and to work with the um trying to resolve matters that are criminal in nature. Uh that in line with what you're saying, it's uh there are several entities involved in the tribal court system. It's the prosecutor's office, the attorney general, as well as uh the defendant. So in those matters, I believe if the parties decide to come to a resolution and try to resolve a criminal matter, um in our court system, they call them plea bargains or maybe dispositional hearings, where the parties sit down and discuss um pleading guilty to an appropriate sentence, um if in fact they're guilty. But um I think we're all in this together, the tribal council, as well as the court and law enforcement. And I think the major impetus of resolving conflicts and problems would would um probably be a major step of communication between the parties. Um uh but I'll take legislation from the tribal council to address those issues. Uh Mr. Steel.
Okay, um and and the other question, you know, I won't ask in in now is in regards to recusing yourself, because that's, you know, one good statement I hear about yourself as a judge, is that you do recuse yourself when 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 appropriate. My other question would be, um so how strong, you know, as an Olga's tribal judge, how strongly do you feel about keeping our Lakota children with our with our tribal members?
I think that was the major impetus of the Indian Child Welfare Act, was to keep children within our culture and within the immediate family. So I believe all the court uh judges support that, support that issue.
Okay, thank you for your service, Mr. Littlehawk.
Uh thank you, Mr. Steel.
Uh thank Councilman, uh Council additional questions for Mr. Judge Littlehawk? Uh or Councilman Littlehaw, sorry about that, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, uh Chairman. Welcome uh even here for Mr. Littlehawk, you know, that. Uh I know he's talked about the being in the judicial system quite a while here, didn't he? I know he's uh very culturally aspect where lakota ways. Uh I believe that he talks lakota, lakota, I hope.
Uh.
I know we started out, uh cultural aspect, well, all lakota, you know, some of the people that affluent lakota, you know, it'd be easier to talk to talk with him in lakota, so, you know, both ways, you could uh all lakota cultural aspects, you know, in order to put into numerous times to come to court, you know, that seems like it's all alcohol and drugs related that have been involved in addiction with the chemicals, you know, that there's time and time again, seems like they come come back to court, you know, then. I think uh going to the court, you need to curb that in order to get them some help, you know? In order to get them some help to maybe go to uh cultural aspect, or taking sweats or sodanses and so forth, or either get some counseling from medicine men or spiritual leaders to get get them some assistance, you know, to curb that, to get away from that, you know? The way of life with a negative side of it, and all the getting in trouble, going to jail time after time again, so. Um maybe a question for Mr. Littlehawk is, I know, maybe he calls that a lot of people that go to jail, go in front of him, you know, so. Maybe for his question is, uh what would uh what route would you take with all these numerous clients that come come to uh in front of you to, you have to face the judge, you know, so? What would uh what decisions you make, you know, how does that affect the children? All the way from grandchildren to elder. All the way from grandchildren to alderies, that would affect the home, right? In order to curb that, what would you do?
In a criminal court, generally the judge is supposedly objective, impartial, and the defendant is considered innocent until proven guilty. And the responsibility of the attorney general's office is to find that person guilty through evidence and testimony presented to the court. So places a judge in a position of trying to, working with both parties to see that the process involved is fair, fair and protects the defendant's rights also. So the judge makes a decision based on what the attorney general's prosecutors present to the court. And if the evidence is sufficient enough, the court can find them guilty and apply a sentence that is appropriate. And generally the sentencing recommendation comes from the prosecutor who is prosecuting the case, as well as the defendant and his advocate. They can always recommend the sentence on their behalf. So that burden lies with those parties if they want an alternative sentence like cultural sentence based, some sentence that would come into play, incorporating the cultural aspects of it. That's a matter the court can also consider.
Okay, thank you for your time. Councilors, any other questions for Judge Little? Hearing received, none online. Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it. And if you just want to have a seat, you can.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So next we got Judge Hussman. Go ahead and come up.
My name is John Hussman. I've been an associate judge for four years now. And I'm, I guess reapplying for the job, so to speak. That's why I'm here. When I first came here, I, I was gonna say good morning, but I guess we're kind of past that. But in any event, the experience I've had basically is, I think it was about 1977, 1977? I became a police officer at the Los Angeles Police Department. LAPD gave me six months of legal training and in every type of law imaginable, criminal law, civil law, regulatory law, statutory law, even traffic law, you go down the line. But the thing is, is that I guess we're kind of evolving as a tribe and then to actually develop the codes for, for, I guess, to compare with that. Some of the questions that the council have been asking were pretty good. Well, anyway, I'll finish up. Okay, I started then, I called Fred Tubols, he was captain of the police at that time. And he said, "Come on back." He said, "We'll give you a job." And so I came back and then I started working for, I guess, the police department. It wasn't public safety at that time. And Fred, as a captain, was probably about the best captain you're ever gonna meet. He had really good common sense and he really had a good sense of humanity. And because of that, I believe I learned a lot from Fred as well. The two takeaways that I, that I got from the Los Angeles Police Department. One of the instructors opened his, his presentation by saying, "When a tree falls in a forest, doesn't make a sound." And when you think of it, it's kind of a ridiculous question. But as he explained it, what he meant was that if a crime is committed and the police officer responding to the call does not have the knowledge or experience to identify what happened as a crime, and basically no sound has been made because it will not be in his report, it will not be investigated because of the fact that nobody knows that it happened in the first place. The other thing that, I think it was on our last day of training, another instructor told me that you, when you are a police officer, you are obligated to enforce all of the laws. That includes the Bill of Rights as, as it is, because that is a law. And it's, and it's more important, or just as important for some of the laws that you're going to be enforcing. Now, when I started with public safety, I took an oath. The oath was to, to enforce all of the laws in the codes and also to, to enforce all of the laws contained in the constitution of this tribe. And basically that's where I get my lead and my direction from. And so far I believe it has served me well. And, and I will continue to do that if I reinstated as a judge. The questions that you asked too, I mean, you know, I was listening about children and all of that. I read the Youth and Family Code several times that I had occasion to enforce it. But in that code, it starts, it starts on, I think in the very first paragraph by saying, "Takashka is the only person that has the right to, to, to take away the rights of a parent." Words to that effect. And I believe that. And then from there it gets in, into like a six month period in which case if, if there is like physical harm done to the child, if there's neglecting or anything like that, and, and the parent has responsibility or culpability in that situation, then according to the code, then the judge must take, take that child and remove him from that house in, into a place of safety. And while he's at that safety, then usually the judge will also, I guess, outline a program of sobriety and also like anger management and all of that. So, so that the parents can become better parents when they get their children back. But that's the objective, that's the objective of that code. It's to reunification within a six month period of time. Now, if the parents are unwilling to, to work with, with, I guess, the people that are involved in that situation, then there will be consideration by tribal law of removing that child permanently from that home, especially if the parents cannot offer that child a safe and healthy environment. Now, I, I guess, I've been lucky like in civil court of having a staff, a staff that I work with. The staff that I work with, they, they are really into the jobs that they have. When we get someone that is referred to our court through either the prosecutor's office or my, my family's referral, we'll accept that. Then, then, then what we do is, is that, is that we, in preparation for, for what needs to be happening, there will be like, like a psychological examination set up and based on that, a, a methodology, I guess, developed by the Indian Health Service that our courts will call into the game, so to speak, so that we do have professionals involved in what is transpiring. Now, a lot of times through the Indian Health Service, we do have an opportunity to utilize other resources that may not, may not be locally present. As a matter of fact, we've sent people who have been addicted to drugs as far away as California because they seem to have the right program. And to my knowledge, the Indian Health Service has provided the money for that. There's different resources, I guess, that we have now, but I think most of the testimony here by the judges point to the fact that we do not have the resources we need to handle every case as expediently as it should be happening. There was one guy out of Manderson, I forgot his name, Whitebum, I think it was Percy, was it? Percy Whitebum? He was working with children and he, he was using, I guess, horse psychology, as he called it. So he used horses, so that if they got along, weren't to get along with horses, then basically that would enhance their ability to get along, period, in this world that we live in. I guess, having said that, I know I haven't covered all of the bases, so to speak, so if there's any questions, go, go ahead.
Councilors, any questions? Chairman Watkins, do you have a, okay, go ahead, Chairman Watkins.
John, I'm listening to you. I know you, you know what you're doing. So I want to ask you, what do you, these dumb drug dealers that get busted and sent to, to the courthouse? I know we had to push it on that, that stage because they're being let out. What's your idea on that?
Excuse me?
The drug dealers here on a reservation, they made several laws on council floor. One of them was that they're busted and found guilty being a dealer with a mask. They're gonna be removed off the reservation. Then we started adding up, people getting busted for drugs, going to courthouse, and then they were being released. So we had to bring that issue up again for, with the ordinance, that they'd be held for maybe seventy-two hours. But what's your idea on that? On our drug dealer, what should be dealt with them?
Okay, first of all, we do have a, we do have tribal codes and basically, as I said, generally try to follow them. I mean, in building a case, we're outside of that. But by that I mean, sometimes they have, I guess, a arrest that is made where they don't know who those drugs belong to. So they may have three or four people involved in that vehicle. And then they charge everybody with, with all of those drugs. So usually until they can identify who the owner of those drugs are, then everybody sits in jail until that happens. Now, basically, according to our tribal code, I, I don't believe that we have the authority to do that because it's, it's usually through federal process. And if somebody wants to make a federal case of it, that's fine. But by the same token, like you said, they have like seventy-two hours to get a hold of a federal magistrate or federal judge and get a warrant for his arrest and send the US Marshal Services out with the travel warrant if you know, if that's what happened. Or he can be held legally. Because anything beyond that outside of tribal law is a violation of the civil rights.
That's all about that. Thank you. Councilor, additional questions for Judge Hussman? See, Judge Hussman, I think you're good. Yeah, so. Yeah, so I did, I did. I'll see any questions, Judge, so. Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Judge. Ms. Musa, you want to mark, I think?
Good afternoon, okay, good evening. My name is Debbie Musa. I worked for law enforcement services for almost twenty-five years. I'm an ex-dis dispatcher, ex-police officer, SRO officer, and for thirteen years, evidence tech. I come from the Tubols, Toshplay, Downey, Ratchet, Cable. I, after I retired in January of 2018, I stayed. I went to, I went to the courthouse one time. My coworker, Breanna, she told me that they needed a prosecution myself. I put in for it and I was selected by the, I mean, Attorney General. Said to hire me. And being a dispatcher, or excuse me, an evidence technician, I had to take in all the evidence that come from the police, police officers, if they arrested somebody, what they were charged with, what kind of weapon it was or whatever, in the code, the section, what they were being charged with. So that helped me out a lot when I started working as a prosecutor. And I was taught by the best renowned, she was there for years and she helped me, taught me how to do things. And then I, I started doing pre-trials, reviews, motions, bench trials. And I did two jury trials. It was good. We're now, we're back to doing dispositional hearings, which the defendant has the right to come back. Okay, first of all, when they go to agreement, they give them a date. So they come back and if they wanna change their plea to guilty, then we set up a pre-trial. And then if they agree to, then we do that and the judge reads it over. If it's okay, we grant it. And then they start their community service and define their their court costs, you know, that. So we've been pretty busy. We have disposicionals every day, Monday through Friday. And then every, every couple months we rotate. So I, when I come to Kyle and I stay over here, I come every day for two weeks and then go back over there. So when, when Oma comes out, then I step in and do this. In voluntary commitment. Any questions?
Councilman Watkins?
Yeah, I, I, I thought about it and then I forgot to write the, I forgot to write the letter of intent in there. I'll just disregard it. But I'm not, I'm a good, I could be a good judge too. Can you bring your microphone for that? Can you hear it over here?
I told, I just said that. I think I could be a good judge too, because of all of the experience I've had.
There's something, question on, on this, kind of a keyword, compliments. Steele was asking about, I need code on C P S. I think he talked about the rights of people, elders that were having trouble with it. What do you think about that?
Been, been there, I hardly ever go in there, but I stepped in and didn't have to, so. I believe that, you know, they, they should be, it should be doubted, you know, right away. When I've been in there, it's, it's, it's like once every, not too much, but. Because I, they're mostly in Creighton. When I've been in there, it's like once every, not too much, but... Because I do mostly in crime. I do all the other stuff, early events and bench trials.
That's all about it.
Thank you, counselor. Additional questions? Counselor, Ms. Musa? See, I think it was...
Okay, thank you for letting us in.
Thank you, Ms. Musa. Appreciate your service and the importance and justice. So, Counselor, so I believe that Ms. Hillsright is withdrawn. And Ms. Bear, is it a bit here?
She's online.
Oh, she's online.
She was online.
Always perfect. So did you withdraw from the judge? So, yeah, so Ms. Hillsright withdrawn with associate judges. And Ms. Bear?
This is my son.
So, Counselor, so I believe Ms. Bear is not online. Ms. Hillsright has withdrawn from the associate judge. So there's four, you heard from Judge Daniel, Judge Bart, Judge Hesman, Judge Littlehop, and Ms. Musa. Counselor, how would you like to proceed? Talk some skill?
I believe on Mr. Phil's pipe also. I don't know if you've gone on Zoom.
I don't know if he's not registered. Is there somebody on iPhone?
He, I don't know if he's registered as the judge. I know he's registered as a prosecutor. Did he, was he assigned to be a judge?
No, he put on, put in for both.
Oh, yeah. This is a letter you sent us. It says, OST Tribal Counsel from Land Bill Supply, March 2021. Letter of intent for OST Tribal Prosecutor. Please accept this letter of intent for the position of prosecutor at OST General Act. As an emergency hire to help the tribe accept the stated position as prosecutor on jobs of two, twenty thirteen, so to play counsel to pre. I'm sorry. I'm running a twenty seventeen, my three-year appointment ended. I'm running a front line. Very interested in attempting to help our people. And those partners are tribe, I think prosecutor for those are tribe. Thank you for your time and consideration. If you have any questions or concerns, you can talk right here. Those two zero five, that's a five, two zero five. Or email. Doesn't state his intention to be a judge. Chairman? Yes?
One of the applicants is willing to do the interview on phone? If that's okay?
Is it?
Ms. Bear?
Ms. Bear?
She's... Is it okay if I put it on the line? Okay. Go ahead, let me.
Ms. Bear, go ahead. Yeah, ten minutes. However, you want to use that, ten minutes. You can talk about your background, your experience, all that. If you just want to go over it and take questions from the counsel. It's up to you. It's your ten minutes. And we'll start it right now. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I cannot hear that. I cannot hear that at all. It's a little distant.
Go ahead.
Okay, hello. My name is Bomiomi Bearan. I am a new member of the OST Tribe. I'm a parent, I can't find that bearan. I do come from the Bearan Rock Whiteface here in Los Angeles, by age. I was born and raised on reservation. I lived most of my entire life in Port wine. That's definitely most of my life here. School, work. I did leave for education and did not get a visa. And I was temporarily hired in June of 2020 as a ten, or prosecutor during the COVID pandemic, but they were short-staffed. And I had been still in this position since. I didn't have really a good experience in the teachings and everything that I had been able to do thus far. I don't really like to talk about myself. I can just move forward to the questions.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, are there any questions for Ms. Bear? Let's just talk. Counselor, any questions for Ms. Bear at this time? And Counselor Steele, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Oh, you can hear us, okay. Oh, you're good, okay. I don't see any questions. Okay, yeah, I don't see the questions at this time, Counselor. Thank you, Ms. Bear. I appreciate your time. I know what you put in for the prosecutor position as well. So if you just want to stand by and we'll figure this process out. So thank you again for your interest and for jumping on.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And I believe Mr. Phil's pipe's on right now? Mr. Phil's the pipe, can you hear us? Mr. Phil's the pipe, can you hear us?
Chairman, all right, Counselor. I think at the time he stated he didn't have the Zoom application on his phone. So I don't know if you can hear us, but Mr. Phil's pipe, there's a mute button on that, on your Zoom. If you could hit that, then they'll be able to hear you here.
Apparently, his mic is undid it right now. Mr. Phil's the pipe, can you hear us? So we can't hear right now, Counselor. So I would hope you will proceed on this. Somebody's calling at the moment, so.
Hello? Yeah?
Chairman? Yes? Can we do the same thing? He's on a volume. Can he clarify for the record that what his intention was? Because when he eventually put in his letter of intent, there was no, there was no... He just stated that he wants to be part of prosecutors?
If you intended to put in for the associate judge, man, of course.
Are you able to hear on the mic?
We can hear him if his mic's on.
I would be willing to put in both.
Excuse me?
I'd be willing to put in both positions.
This is if there's a need for a judge? Okay, thank you, Mr. Phil's the pipe. If you want to, if you want to go ahead and state on just your intention, and then you can give your heard, ten minutes to speak. And so if you want to do your position for the judge, we can take that right now. So, yeah, ten minutes. Counsel has been hearing people's positions. And so if you would help with your experience, your introduction, your background, or if you want, Counsel, to ask questions, that's up to you on this Phil's pipe.
Good evening. My name is Lance Philspite. My intention would be, if there is a position open for an associate judge, I would like to apply for that position. And also, if that position is filled, then I'd be considered to continue being the prosecutor for the OST Tribe.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, any questions for Mr. Philspite? Go ahead, Counselman, Carl.
I wonder if Mr. Philspite could give us a little history or maybe education or something like that?
Okay, my name's Philspite. I'm forty-seven years old. I do have an associate of science degree in criminal justice. I was transferred away from a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. My initial intentions of going to the Wolf was to be a citizen, to be convicted for a chief of police or captain of police position. But unfortunately, life didn't happen in the cards for me. Ended up going through a divorce. And that pretty much limited my chances at college at the time because I needed to put kids on my children. I believe my GPA was a three point nine nine GPA when I graduated from United Tribe Technical College, when I got the associate of science degree. I was taking classes with Monmouth State University and taking the junior and senior level classes. I had a three point two two GPA. As far as work experience goes, I have about six years total law enforcement experience with the OST Tribe Department of Public Safety. And I've honestly lost count on the number of years working, whether it be with IHS Hospital here in New York, Braywitz Casino, and also campus security at United Tribe Technical College. I was a full-time student and also working full-time to support my family when I was going to school in this market. As far as prosecutor experience, I've been in my position for approximately forty years. I've worked in all aspects of our positions, most focused in youth and family support. So I guess out of the prosecutors, I would probably be the one with the most knowledge when it comes to temporary, emergency custody orders, Indian Child Welfare Act, dealing with parents and trying to keep under rules now to make better decisions from mine. But I've also been a part of the adult criminal court in prosecuting the cases at that level and working with the four associate judges as well as in the same courtroom as the chief judge. I've been with the desk.
Thank you, Mr. Philspite. And Counselors, any other questions that we have for Mr. Philspite at this time? Mr. Philspite, so did you submit your resume and all that present stuff?
Maybe when I first put in for this position, a little over three years ago, the only reason I'm not very certain is because I was in court and I did not know that the positions were advertised. Normally, we have a list of all the job openings posted at our office on our public. Unfortunately, with the coronavirus, I didn't see one. So I didn't know that there was a deadline for the positions. Or else I would have submitted an application, resume, and everything else I was required to petition. And without going, I went about my regular day, taking care of the docking.
All right, thank you. Counsel, so I'll leave it up to you, Mr. Counsel, on how they're going to proceed, if they want to accept this as his letter of intent to also include it in the judge, the vote for judges. Just because, you know, they didn't say that. I have his letter of intent out here, and they didn't state that anywhere. And we also have the letters of intent from all the judges that was passed out. That's standing in that they were. They did want to be considered for associate judge. Even Ms. Hills, Hillsright submitted one, but she did wrong. She withdrew hers. I believe this bare letters is with your applications as well. But there's no letter of intent, I can't see what at least. So, Counsel, I'll leave it up to you if you want to proceed. And if you saw it before. Counselman, Carl?
Mr. Jerry, you know, the previous election for chief of police, you know, we, even though there were only two that were certified by the HR, we allowed every one of them to do a presentation. So I think we need to follow the same procedure.
Okay, thank you. I, you know, I would just ask that you have an official action on that as well, just to make sure of your compliance, Counselman Steele. And just for the record, we're a portion of members right now. So if we lose one person, we can't move on, so.
Chairman, when they did contact you this morning, I didn't have an answer. I told him that those, there was a cutoff line. However, he did say that he was in court the day of the cutoff line. And so I just told him to submit a resume, which was forwarded on to the secretary or a letter of intent that he submitted. So that was the only documentation. That I done, let him know that the time, time frame was coming down as far as submitting the documentation. And I told him that it would be a call by the tribal council to allow him to proceed. But just to give the document to the secretary, which states that you received the document?
Yeah, we have it. So we gave it.
Okay, so the secretary did receive his letter of intent. And, you know, what Mr. Carl said is, you know, earlier, we accepted applicants that weren't qualified according to HR to give an interview for the chief of police. And, you know, if we're going to open the door for individuals, you know, we need to be fair to all people that are interested. You know, being that Mr. Philspite is a current prosecutor, I think, I mean, it's proper to allow him to continue in that field of work. But that's me personally. But I still think it should be a decision by the counsel to consider.
Okay, any else, man? So we should declare vacation. Counsel, I mean, it's on you, I'm here to proceed with that application. Could you use your mic, Counselman Carl?
I don't know. See around that thing where there's kind of talk. You can see the manager there. I'll make a motion that Mr. Philspite's application be accepted.
Is there a second? Oh, second, second, my counsel, Steel. Is there any discussion on that, counsel? Counselman Young, is that for both positions or just the prosecutor? Just for the record, I'm sorry, answering Counselman Young's question, that he did get his letter for prosecutor, but we're just voting on, I'll take some of the judge's shit, so. Further questions, counsel? Aaron, we see none. Secretary, if you want to run the vote, thank you.
Wesley Harkin, Senior?
Oh.
Blake Littlethunder?
Oh.
For Wright Horse?
Yes.
Ryan Jampenico, Senior? Ryan Jampenico, Senior? Jeff Kino, Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior? Taylor Yellowbys? Gwendolyn Yang, Junior?
Yes.
Randy Gray? James Crass?
Yes.
Phil John Carlo?
No.
George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spalberg? David Clear?
No.
Sonia Littlema, Western? Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
Adam Carlo, Senior?
Yes.
Gordon Skil?
Yeah.
Rick Dunham?
No.
Counsel, so we got 10 minutes, probably known for not wanting to give counsel some more out into the list. So in the past, as, as, I think there's more positions on, counsel, we have like 36 candidates. And, oh, they got ready, okay, start with arms if you want to get ready and get those ballots up and do the positions. Yeah, and write down court names, counsel, for this. And, and we can go with the top four vote getters. Chair? Boy, what's, so what's over 50%? How many, how many do we have? No, so we have, I believe we have 14, so the eight. So for clarification, we do have 19.
Chair?
Austin.
Okay, Chair.
It's one of these. It's supposed to be with a team for normal, it's on the bottom, so they're named upon there.
She accused herself, she did her, she did herself. Okay, thank you, boy. So you're going to write court names, counsel, on the.
Who's going to be for trial?
Question?
Go ahead, Counselman.
How many candidates? There's six candidates, how many do we vote for?
About four, Counselman.
Four? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Members on board, if you could text, see your vote, thank you.
Mine's the Oregonian kitchen.
Mine's the English.
Oregonian buzzard.
Ours is the Oregonian bay dog.
Okay, and counsel, so again, I'll just speak with vacancy on, so once the candidates report associate judge positions to fill that, it's by a term of office for three to four years unless reviewed for cause of our reasonable abolition, upsetting office, or office vacate due to resignation of the DAS advertisement is from Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021, open until November 17, 2021. The office and the secretary will issue all applications to try to counsel admit the appointments. So this is what we're, what we vote, counsel, so there's four associate judge positions. Okay, counsel, so we have, so we have 72 members present at the council, so that will constitute eight for a majority. So boy, sir, you know. Okay. Steve Emery. John Hussman. Richard Littlehawk. Deborah Musso. Steve Emery, Richard Bark, John Hussman, Richard Littlehawk. Richard Littlehawk, Deborah Musso, Richard Bark, John Hussman. Steve Emery, Richard Littlehawk, Deborah Musso, Lance Philzeppe. Emery, Littlehawk, Bear Runner, Philzeppe. Steve Emery, Richard Bark, Richard Littlehawk, Deborah Musso. Hold up, hold up. Bear Runner. Lance Philzeppe. Richard Littlehawk. Steve Emery. Steve Emery. Richard Littlehawk. Bear Runner. Lance Philzeppe. Bear Runner. Littlehawk. Philzeppe. Musso. Steve Emery. Richard Littlehawk. John Hussman. Richard Bark. Hussman. Musso. Littlehawk. Bark. Steve Emery. Richard Bark. John Hussman. Richard Littlehawk. Steve Emery. John Hussman. Bonnie Bear. Richard Bark. Steve Emery. Richard Bark. Deborah Musso. Okay. This one only has two. John Hussman. Richard Littlehawk. Bear Runner. Philzeppe. Steve Emery. Richard Bark. Littlehawk. Hussman. Bear Runner. Richard Littlehawk. Steve Emery. Richard Bark. Richard Littlehawk, that's it.
Um, for the majority vote, we have, um, Richard Littlehawk with fifteen, Steve Emery with thirteen, Richard Bark with ten, and John Hussman with nine. And we have seventeen present, seventeen at vote.
Okay, Councilor, uh, so we do have a majority for our candidates, I believe. Um, Secretary, is there a resolution? Oh, Councilor, please.
Chair, we have the motion Andrew Richard Littlehawk, Steve Emery, Richard Bark, and John Hussman.
Uh, thank you, Councilor. Uh, thank you, Sergeant Norris, Secretary, appreciate your, your work on doing that. Uh, Secretary, is there that resolution? Uh, John, you have second, okay, there's a second, awesome, sorry, uh, Councilor, sorry, Councilor.
Councilor, I need clarification, because we have two resolutions. One is for the Tiahau Court House, and the other one is for the Penridge Court House.
Uh, Councilwoman Steele?
Chairman, uh, that was a question that falls on the Chief Judge, and he stated that he would do the assignment, so I think if we just did a blanket resolution, just approving all four Associate Judges and allowing our Chief Judge to make those assignments, I, I think that would be proper.
Okay, thank you, Councilor. Uh, is there others, uh, to ask, okay, so, uh, any more questions? Uh, Councilor, so is that the motion, is that your motion, to do that blanket resolution for, okay. Okay, thank you, Councilor, uh, additional questions, Councilor? Uh, Senior, here now, subject of re-.
Resolution on the Ogalllo Sutchahee Council of the Ogalllo Sutchahee Appointing, Richard Littlehawk, Steve Emery, Richard Bark, and John Hussman as Associate Judges of the Ogalllo Sutchahee Court, Tribal Court. Whereas the Ogalllo Sutchahee adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum on December fourteen nineteen thirty-five, according to Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four twenty-five U.S.C., subsection five hundred and thirty-three. And under Article three of the Ogalllo Sutchahee Constitution, the Ogalllo Sutchahee Council is the governing body of the Ogalllo Sutchahee. And whereas the Ogalllo Sutchahee Council has exercised its authority under Article five, section one K of the Ogalllo Sutchahee Constitution, to establish a reservation court with court houses in Penridge and Tiahau, whereas the tribal council has the power to appoint Associate Judges to the Ogalllo Sutchahee Tribal Court by a vote of two-thirds of those voting at a meeting of the tribal council pursuant to O.S.T. Law and Order Code Chapter one, Section two point one, two point two. Now therefore be resolved that the Ogalllo Sutchahee Council hereby appoint Richard Littlehawk, Steve Emery, Richard Bark, and John Hussman as the Associate Judges of the Ogalllo Sutchahee Tribal Court. Be it further resolved that the salary shall be as budgeted for the Associate Judges' position for the, for the court house. And be it further resolved that the judge appointed, judges appointed by this resolution shall hold office for a period of four years unless sooner removed for cause or by reason of abolishing of said office, or if the office is vacated due to the resignation or death pursuant to O.S.T. Law and Order Code Chapter one, Section two point three, certification.
Uh, boy, no, Councilor, please. Okay.
Chair, is that vote, this vote, uh, does that vote have to be a two-thirds? That's what it says in the resolution.
Oh, it does. I guess I say two-thirds. Uh, Councilwoman Steele.
Uh, Councilwoman Steele, you have a name. If, if I believe it's correct, it does state in the code by two-thirds vote of the council, like, then we might have to individually vote every single position, um, every resolution separately, right?
That was the point, that was the good thing, uh, it does say that code. Unless, uh, by, in clarity, that for us, or it's one of the secretaries that I believe that's what it states.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Gunn, what?
If the code does say two-thirds vote, um, it says that each judge shall be appointed by a vote of two-thirds of those voting at a meeting of the tribal council. And so, if, if you were to run it as one resolution, it would have to pass by two-thirds. If you run them separately, each would have to pass by two-thirds.
Chair, uh, hold on, hold on, hold on. Uh, okay, Councilor, so, uh, by that standard, um, I believe if we do a two-thirds, uh, Mr. Emery, Mr. Littlehawk would cross that threshold, and we'll have to do another vote of the ones that, uh, that can get that two-thirds, um, and so we just have to do the four candidates, but Miss, uh, Miss Musso? Uh, Miss Musso? Uh, did you say you withdrew from this, the, the judge? I just wanted to clarify that. You shall, so Miss Musso withdrew from, from this one? Uh, so that would be, yeah, okay, uh... So that would leave four candidates, Council? So if we want to go on to four, and then we'll forget the two-thirds, we could, we could probably do that. So we'd have to do the vote again, other ones that... Is it just the resolution as well? Okay, uh, Mr. Gunn, so is, so, uh, hold on, hold on, uh, so is that, is the, is it the resolution that Musso passed by two-thirds, or is it the, the each judge that needs two-thirds of vote?
It just says each judge shall be appointed by a vote of two-thirds of those voting. So I, I think if you, if you ran a resolution, and two-thirds of, of those of you voting voted for the judge in the resolution, um, I, I think that would suffice. It just says, uh, but I want to be clear, and you all can interpret this however you think is right, says each judge shall be appointed by a vote of two-thirds of those voting at a meeting of the tribal council. And, and technically, when you, when you vote on a motion or a resolution, that, that is a vote. So if you were to have a resolution appointing judge number one, and it passed by two-thirds, that would be, that would be a vote of two-thirds.
Uh, Councilor, okay, so you got a problem, so I know, uh, Councilwoman Swatit Bear, and then Councilwoman Sears.
Thank you for that, Mr. Gunn, now, two of them have made the two-thirds vote, wouldn't we just vote for two more candidates as a two-thirds?
Uh, Mr. Gunn?
Well, um, yes, if you want to run, if you want to run another vote for the two who didn't get two-thirds during your vote, you can do that, um, that's fine, you can, you... You could take the top two, four vote-getters and run the resolutions, and if they all got two-thirds when you run it that way, then that would be your decision, but that's really up to you.
Um, uh, oh, Councilwoman Sears?
Yeah, um, I think the way I interpret it is that, um, the, the selection we made, those were just the votes that we took, but to confirm it by resolution, I think that would be the two-thirds of each one. I'm, I'm thinking it's of each, so it's got to be run separately, all four of them. I mean, that's just the way I interpret it.
Okay, thank you, Councilor, uh, so there's a couple options, Council, so, so one of the options, and again, it's, it's the interpretation of the two-thirds, uh, so the one option is to accept the top two, and then do another runoff between the four, and then get in, uh, the second option is to accept all of the ones who got selected, get that, and do those by individual resolution, is that correct? And if one of those resolutions doesn't get two-thirds, then revotes, or, uh, run one regular resolution with all four names, and then getting the two-thirds, um, so I believe that's what's been explained.
Chairman?
All right, so, Councilwoman Steele, and then, and then Councilwoman Whitehorse?
Chairman, it's obvious that, uh, Judge Littlehawk and Judge Emery were, were, you know, they were obvious, you know, obviously, they, they, they were, they were the vote, the lead vote-getters, I think, um, we should just eliminate them out of the net, the running, and then, like you said, go with the option to do the next four, and then if they, if they go past the twelve-vote margin, then that meets the two-third requirement, because I don't think it's fair to either Judge Littlehawk or Judge Emery if, if council reps vote no against a blanket resolution, um, because they don't support other two judges, so I, I think it'll only be fair to just do another runoff.
Uh, okay, then, Councilor, uh, Councilwoman Whitehorse?
I think, eh, to save time, we should just do individual resolutions in the order that they were voted, and if they don't get two-thirds, we go to the next one, do you know what I mean? Because we know that the top two are definitely going to get two-thirds, because they have enough support. So why don't we just run each individual motion, that way they're done by a resolution individually for each appointment? We do a resolution for Judge Littlehawk, and a resolution for Judge Emery, and then a resolution for Judge Bark, and then a resolution for John Hussman, and if either of the other two, the lower two, don't get two-thirds, then we go to the next highest and do a resolution for them. That would save time, instead of having to do a whole runoff again.
Okay, um, so, Council, so you have multiple options, I'm just waiting for somebody to make a motion, so, that's what I'm looking for, so. You have a core option, the candidates, uh, Councilwoman Swatit Bear?
If it's a motion, I'd like to motion to keep the top two who made the two-thirds vote, and then rerun the vote for the remaining two to gain a two-thirds vote.
I'll second your motion.
So that's, uh, there's a motion made, second it, is there any other motions at this time? Okay, thank you, uh, thank you, Councilor, so, um, so there's a motion on the floor, Council, um, so again, uh, can you state your motion at the time, uh, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Chair, I'd like to motion that the top two who made the two-thirds vote remain, and then we take another vote for the remaining two to gain a two-thirds vote.
Thank you, and just for the record, I, I want to do a roll call vote, so we know how many people are actually voting, um, so Secretary, if you could do this, do run the, the roll call, I know we have a forum, but some of the true, uh...
Chairman, for clarification on the motion, are we doing another vote for the remaining two? Is that your motion? Okay.
So, uh...
Mr. Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Gunn, what?
Do I understand the motion-maker to mean that it's a runoff with all candidates for the last remaining two slots, with the exception of the two high-vote-getters?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, Secretary, if you want to, uh, do a roll, uh, yeah, just do a roll.
This is to establish forum. Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Yeah.
Blaine Littlethunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Here.
Ryan Jumping Eagle? Gerald Canoeo, Junior?
Present.
Austin Watkins, Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Still here.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Me, too.
Rhonda Bray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Here.
Ella John Carlo? George Dreamer, Junior?
Present.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Present.
Richie Iron Todd is excused. David Poyer?
Here.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston? I believe she refused herself from the voting.
She needs to be led.
Jackie Sears?
Here.
Michael Carlo, Senior?
Present.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior is excused. Garfield Steele?
Here.
Craig Dillon?
You can't let me smalls, but I'm here.
Seventeen present?
Okay, council, so there's seventeen here, and then, uh, we're gonna get the number that we need for two thirds. Uh, so twelve constitutes a two thirds, council. So Sergeant Arms, if you want to, um, help with the voting again. Oh, okay. Uh, so if we could run that vote, uh, for councilwoman Swatner, and, uh, we, we start there, put this ready. So, uh, secretary, ready to call a roll?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Littlethunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior? Gerald Canoia, Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior? Austin?
No.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
Rhonda Bray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
David Clear?
No.
Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
Michael Carlo, Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Chairman, who's left? Two?
Uh, yeah, you pick uh, for the two vacant seats, there's four names. Uh, uh, you can go up to two, you can go into one, substitute, put your score names, and, uh, and again, number twelve constitutes, uh, uh, the two thirds.
Can you announce the names, please?
Uh, yeah, so...
So the, the people who...
Yeah.
So there's Judge Hussman, there's Judge, um, Bart, and then there's Phil's the Pipe and Baird on the Run. That's all we needed to know.
Don't, don't click Judge Watkins. Council, so the theory is from voting is eight, so... We gotta keep it lightweight, because we've been here since eleven, so... Sergeant Arms requested to play this music in the background as we get in, so... Hey, who's listening anyway, so? Gotta be a guy right this minute. Okay, uh, so again, remember, uh, so it's the, uh, twelve, twelve votes, uh, cast two, two thirds. And, um, so, so we'll, we'll come back, so glad, uh, Sergeant Arms. Okay. Richard Bark, John Hussman. Richard Bark, Lance Phil's the Pipe. Phil's the Pipe, Bear Runner. Richard Bark, John Hussman. John Hussman, Richard Bark. Bear Runner, Phil's the Pipe. John Hussman. Richard Bark, Lance Phil's the Pipe. Richard Bark, John Hussman. Hussman, Bark, Bark, Bear Runner. Phil's the Pipe, Bear Runner. Bear Runner, Phil's the Pipe. Phil's the Pipe, Bear Runner. Bark, Hussman. Bear Runner, Phil's the Pipe. Phil's the Pipe, Bear Runner. Etched laugh, that's it. So council, so what we can do is, uh, eliminate the lowest vote getter. Which would be, uh, Mr. Hussman? Is that, is that in here, boy? So the, those of you that are listening, uh, the results are Richard Bark nine, John Hussman seven, Bear Runner eight, and Phil's the Pipe nine. And none of the candidates met, met the two third threshold.
Also do another presentation.
So council, so there's, uh, so we could do another vote, but we could vote for one, and you just have to keep eliminating. That would be the other option. That would be the first way. So you just revote, vote for one, whoever gets that, you know, highest number, and then you gotta do another vote for the three candidates, and that's that. So is there any... There's two options here in this case. So we vote for the... You eliminate one, or you just do another vote. You probably have two more votes.
Chairman?
Uh, councilwoman Whitehorse?
Um, I think Sonia's trying to get in, and I think she should be allowed to vote since, um, Richard isn't in this, this round.
Uh, yeah, that's a good point. Thank you, councilwoman. She's on, okay. She's on, okay.
Chairman, what are we doing now?
Okay, so what we'll do is, uh, so we'll do another vote. Uh, you'll pick the, the, you'll pick one name, and, uh, it's got to do by elimination. So you're gonna have to run at least two votes.
So we're voting one?
For, just for one name, yeah, just for one name. Um, so if you vote for one name, it's gonna, you, you will get to that tall threshold. And then the next round, you're gonna have three candidates, and you're gonna just vote one name again, and most likely you'll get to that threshold again. Okay, so we now will have, uh, twelve. Now twelve's the threshold, and, uh, we have eighteen members, because Sonia's, uh, the councilwoman, uh, Littlehawk Weston, so, so again, council, so just vote for one name?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, Mr. President?
Go ahead, uh, councilwoman.
Yeah, you know, I don't know if it would be, uh, fair for me to be voting, because I didn't listen to none of the interviews on the associate judges. I did recuse myself from, uh, you know, the interviews for the associate judge positions.
Oh, uh, Richard, get in, uh, that changes your perception of mine? Cause there would be no conflict of interest. So you're just voting for one name, council? And, uh, for the members online and listening public, so we have Mr. Richard Bark, Miss, Miss Baird, uh, Miss Bear Runner, Mr. Phil Fupar, and, uh, Judge Hussman. So you're gonna pick one name, uh, uh... Uh, just for the record, council, so councilwoman Littlehawk Weston is recusing herself, because she wasn't part of the interview process, which is fine, uh, so the forum is still at total, so you need twelve for two thirds.
If we're doing one vote, I don't think anyone's gonna get that, that threshold. I think we should just go at the highest vote getter and carry on. I don't know, but the resolution can be voted two thirds. But we're not gonna get to two thirds voting.
So we'll just, we'll do the votes and then see what happens, and then, then we'll try to figure it out if we don't, if it doesn't work, so...
Oh my gosh. That's where we should just do the resolutions in the order of the votes they received.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Hi, Council. Hi, Council.
All right, okay. Bart. Hussman. Bear Runner. Bear Runner. Hussman. Phil's the pipe. Bart. Bart. Bear Runner. Phil's the pipe. Bart. Hussman. Bear Runner. Rick Bart. John Hussman. Phil's the pipe. Phil's the pipe. That's it.
The results are Richard Bart five, John Hussman four, Bear Runner four, and Phil's the pipe four. Well, council's sort of working, so. Either way you look at it, I don't know that it's gonna work. Um, Councilwoman Whitehorse, do you have another idea?
About a half hour ago, Josh. Um, do resolutions for each individual candidate start with the highest vote getter? Because those top two already had two-thirds, so you know they're gonna get two-thirds. And then with the lower ones, go with the highest vote getters that we had in the first round. Do resolutions for them until we get two more with two-thirds vote.
Second.
Okay, so there is a motion, it's been seconded, uh... Council, do you want, uh, is there any discussion on that? All right, council, let's go.
You know, when, um, even if you ran it the way we did just now with Mr. Littlehawk and, um, Mr., uh, Emery, they wouldn't have met the two-thirds either because of the way the voting is. Voting one person, and we're selecting four of them. It's obvious none of them would get the two-thirds, and that's what I stated before. But if, um, if you're gonna do this elimination process that Cora was talking about, you know, it, it switched from the top two, obviously, when we voted one rather than four, so... If you do an open vote, of course, we're all gonna vote in favor of a resolution, open vote. And I don't think that process is, is, um, it's fair to the ones who came in last, but, because it showed that the vote obviously changed when you, when you changed how much we select, each election process. So I think we move on, Mr. Rick Bart, to the other two individuals, and then add one more last election with the last two individuals, and the highest vote getter would be the fourth one. That's my suggestion.
Um, do you want to make that a motion, councilman? Yeah, there's, there's a motion on the... Yeah, we got one of them. So let's just run, uh, Councilwoman Whitehorse's suggestion first, and then, uh, whenever we don't, we don't figure that out, we'll...
Cora, can you, um, clarify again for the record, please?
Run individual resolutions for each candidate to make sure that they have two-thirds vote of the council, starting from the highest vote getters down to the bottom, until we have four candidates to have two-thirds vote. So it would be individual resolutions per candidate.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Blaine Littlethunder. For our white horse?
Yes.
Gerald Canoia Junior. Gerald. Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. Rhonda Bray. James Crox.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo. George D. Virginia.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, no. David Clear. Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Michael Carlos Senior. Garfield Still.
No.
Craig Dillon.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilwoman Whitehouse is nine yes, six no, and one not voting, so... Uh, so by that standard, I'd say we have a couple resolutions we need to do. Uh, so, subject, you're gonna read the first one.
Okay, the first, the first one you had was approving Richard Littlehawk and Steve Emery. So you still need to run the vote on that one. So that's the first resolution, will be to... So this will be for Richard Littlehawk. Wesley Hawkins Senior. Blaine Littlethunder.
Oh.
For our white horse?
Yes.
Gerald Canoia Junior. Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Rhonda Bray.
Oh.
James Crox.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo. George D. Junior.
Yes, yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes. David Clear. Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Okay, council, uh, that passes, wishing yes, one no, and one not voting, thank you. Uh, subject, you wanna read this?
So the second resolution will be for Steve Emery. Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Littlethunder.
Oh.
For our white horse?
Yes.
Gerald Canoia Junior. Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Rhonda Bray.
Oh.
James Crox.
Yes.
George D. Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
David Clear.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Michael Carlos Senior. Garfield Still. Craig Dillon.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilwoman Whitehouse, Mary, send the council, uh, subject, if you wanna read the next one.
Okay, so the next resolution.
Yeah, uh, so the next one, uh, in that original vote was Richard Bart. So is there a motion to accept? A motion by Councilman Clear, is your second. Second by Councilman Watkins. And remember, this is two-thirds, council, so it needs, uh... Uh, so eleven votes are needed, council, on this one, so that's two-thirds. Uh, subject, you wanna read them?
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Littlethunder.
Oh.
For our white horse?
Yes.
Gerald Canoia Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Rhonda Bray.
Oh.
James Crox.
Yes.
George D. Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes. David Clear. Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
No.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman, motion passes, fourteen yes, one no, and one not voting to the council. And for the, uh, last one, it was Mr. John Hussman with no vote. Um, is there a, a motion to accept Mr. Hussman?
Motion.
Okay, motion by, uh, Councilman Watkins, and seconded by Councilman LeBray, and Councilman Watkins, and Councilman Sears. Uh, subject, you wanna read the...
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Littlethunder.
Oh.
For our white horse?
No.
Gerald Canoia Junior.
No.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Rhonda Bray.
Oh.
James Crox.
No.
George D. Junior.
No.
Julian Spotted Bear, no. David Clear.
No.
Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
No.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
No?
Okay, thank you, uh, council. So that motion fails, uh, to receive the necessary two-thirds, uh, nine yes, seven no, uh, one not voting, council. Zero not voting, so nine yes, seven no. So that fails to receive the, uh, our two-thirds. Uh, so, uh, so we have three, uh, so do we just do a runoff? Between the two, or, or, uh? Go ahead, Councilwoman Whitehorse.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of appointing Lance Phil's pipe.
Okay, um... Um, for clarification, uh, from that original vote, uh, Miss Bear Runner received more votes. Uh, seven to six.
Okay, then I'll change my motion to approve her appointment.
So there's a motion to, for Ms. Bearrunner. Because your hustman's voting to the two thirds necessary. According, according to his second, or who's the second, Counselor Steele.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Blaine Littlethunder. Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Gerald Canaya Junior. Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. Rhonda Gray. James Cross.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior. Julian Spotted Bear, yes. David Clear. Jackie Sears. Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Counsel, so Ms. Bearrunner has reached the threshold of fourteen yes votes. And one no vote, so that would be the board. So, so we can move on to the resolution now, yeah, Counselor Steele.
I got fourteen, four, and two views.
Mr. DeBray, that's the only one that got a no.
Counsel, besides Mr. DeBray, or Councilman? DeBray, is there any other votes? Oh, Councilman Watkins, no. So there's, okay, so. Okay, so for the record, it was fourteen, four, and two views, so thank you for that, appreciate it. But it does meet the two thirds, so that would be those two, so thank you. So, Secretary, if you want to run the resolution now with the four names. Okay, so we'll do that as well. Okay, so we have the prosecutors now.
Chairman.
Chairman Watkins.
But it's all right, the council, the two gentlemen, they're keep going. They'll swear to God within tomorrow.
Yeah, that's all right, so we'll give you those tomorrow.
Clarification to the people, boys.
Counsel, so there's four positions, and there's only four applicants. We got, I think, oh, there's three now, yeah, there's been three actually. Yeah, so there's, there's, I believe it's Ms. Deborah Musso. Ms. Killwright, and Lance Philzepipe. Those are the three. And there's four positions. So there's a motion to appoint all three, seconded by Councilman Youngman.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Is this for the prosecutors?
Yeah.
We're not interviewing. Is there going to be interviews, or are they just making a motion to put them in?
They're making a motion to put them in, Councilman.
Okay, I just want to be considered to vote on this one. On the prosecutors.
Okay, good deal. So there's a motion to appoint all three, because there's four positions. Seconded by Councilman Youngman, any discussion on that, Counsel?
Chairman.
Go ahead.
I guess clarification. You just selected Ms. Bearrunner as a judge, so when they're going to speak. Oh, Lance, okay, never mind, my mistake, but yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Watkins. Was that a second, or, okay, so it's seconded by Councilman Youngman and Councilman Watkins.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Gunn.
You did, you did, I just wanted to make sure that we're in agreement that there are three positions that are open.
There's three, four positions that are open, and there's three candidates.
Well, it was my understanding when the council passed its resolution on March. I think it was March third. That they, they asked the secretary to advertise the positions that were held by Lance Philzepipe. Renona Killzright. And Wamdi Omni Bearrunner. But that there was a, there was a fourth position, which. Which is held by Deborah Musso. And she was appointed in 2019. And so I don't think that her position is expiring. And the resolution that the council passed indicated that she has more than one year left on her appointment. If you want, if she's one of the applicants and you want to just simply reappoint her now for a new three years. I suppose that wouldn't be a problem, but. She technically still has time left on her term.
Mr. Gunn.
Yes.
So, I would reword the motion as to. Select. Three individuals. Excluding Ms. Musso, and then reappointing her after this motion is ran.
Yeah, there were three positions that were advertised and that were open, so if you appoint three to fill those three positions. And, and then you could, you could run a motion to appoint her. I suppose it doesn't do any harm, but her position just technically is not expiring yet.
Isn't Debbie one of the applicants?
I thought that she was.
Yeah, she is. So I guess my motion, my amended motion will reach that point. Ms. Bearonna Killzright. Mr. Max Mus, Lance Philzepipe, and. And Ms. Musso. Okay, thank you.
And to advertise for the other position?
And readvertise for the other position, is that, is that where?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, so we'll run that. We'll run that, and then. Secretary, if you want to, is there any discussion? Any discussion at this time, so it's like you're going to read the resolution. And we'll just proceed from there, thank you.
Resolution of the Ogallawasut tribe council of the Ogallawasut tribe, appointing. Renona Killzright, Lance Philzepipe, and Deborah Musso. To serve as tribal prosecutors under the supervision of the tribal attorney general for a term of three years. Whereas the Ogallawasut tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five. In accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five U.S.C., subsection five, one, two, three. And under article three of the Ogallawasut tribe constitution, the Ogallawasut tribe, tribe, governing body of the Ogallawasut tribe. And whereas the Ogallawasut tribe council has exercised its authority under article five, so. So section one K of the Ogallawasut tribe constitution to establish a regulation court. The court houses in Pineruji tile. And whereas the Ogallawasut tribe council has established four tribal prosecutor positions to prosecute criminal offenses. In the Pineruji tile court houses. And whereas the four tribal prosecutor positions are held by the Ogallawasut tribe council under terms and conditions set forth. In tribal law, including chapter one, section nine of the Ogallawasut tribe law. And having, whereas having advertiseded. The positions and having considered the application of qualified candidates, the Ogallawasut tribe council in excess reservation. To fill the positions, now therefore be resolved that the Ogallawasut tribe council of the Ogallawasut tribe. Hereby appoint Renona Killzright, Lance Philzepipe, and Deborah Musso. To serve as tribal prosecutors for the Ogallawasut tribe under the supervision. Of the tribal attorney general for a term of three years. With salaries to be budgeted by the Ogallawasut tribe tribal council on a year-to-year basis. Certification.
Discussion, Counsel? Hearing or speaking non?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. I, I think that you would just have a, another be resolved clause that would just say. That the, the council authorizes and directs the tribal secretary to advertise. The fourth tribal prosecutor position, and to bring all qualified applicants to the tribal council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we go. Any of you else, Counsel? Hearing or speaking non, Secretary, give another vote.
Wesley Hawkins. Blaine Littlethunder. Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Gerald Canaya Junior. Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. Rhonda Gray. James Cross. George Dreamer Junior. Julian Spotted Bear. David Clear. Sonia Wilhamp Weston. Jackie Sears. Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Craig Dillon.
Yep.
Okay, Counsel, so that motion passes seventeen, four, zero against, thank you, Counsel. Thank you to the prosecutors, you're back in, so you don't have to answer any questions. Counsel, so that leaves us with the, we have some two third items, what are we going to do with those, Counsel? Counsel? We have two third items that we want to do, what are we going to do? With those, Counsel?
Motion to recess until tomorrow.
Motion to recess until tomorrow, okay.
Chairman, if we just read the resolutions and go, quickly knock this off in fifteen minutes.
I know that Ms. Cummings wanted the executive session still, and she's still here. If you want to do that. But we'd have to, we can go into executive, is it going to take very long?
Oh, it's going to be long.
Okay. So.
We also have another individual that was here on the issue all day long waiting, and we have that, it's only been a half.
Yeah, who was that, Counselor Steele?
Ms. Doris Speckner.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 okay. So let's, which one was Ms. Respect, I think? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Are we going to do that executive too, or just?
I don't think we need it on an executive, it's a resolution.
Okay. So let's do visas really quick, so we can go. And then we'll, then we'll go to Doris's. That's okay, Counsel? Okay, so we need a motion for executive, Counsel? Motion by Councilman Clear is your second. Second by, your second, second by Councilman Watkins, so it's going executive.
This motion is for executive session. Wesley Hawkins Senior. Blaine Littlethunder. Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Gerald Canaya Junior. Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. Rhonda Gray. James Cross.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior. Julian Spotted Bear. David Clear. Sonia Wilhamp Weston. Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Michael Carlos Senior. Garfield Still. Craig Dillon.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, council, that passes fourteen yes, one no, and one not voting, Council, and six, uh... Oh, yeah, and, uh, Councilman, uh, Watkins, who has six, uh, two. Um, so Ms., uh... So council, one time, I was gonna state, I just said you're ready to go till about one in the morning, so...